See the gigantic audience that we have here tonight?
Mm-hmm.
Is there any public comment on items not listed on the agenda? Seeing none?
I have boat parking out back.
Oh, great. Boat parking. Nice.
Yes.
So, we have Denise.
That's my driveway is.
Denise is in the house. So, our agenda for the evening is a couple of-
If you're going to sit up here and interview people-
Interviews for the-
It's not very friendly.
Planning Commission vacancy. So, how do we handle this?
So, tonight, we have two applicants for the vacant planning commission seat. I've put on your dais and I also shared with the applicants four initial questions that we can work through, that the commissioners can work through.
Are we doing it from here or are we going to sit around a table?
Yes, we are. No, we're going to do it from the dais.
Ouch.
And, once we work through those four questions, we'll have time for commissioners to have a dialogue as well and ask any questions that they would like of the applicants. As we work through both applicants, I've allotted 25 minutes for each question and answer session with the applicant. And, the mayor has joined us tonight to sit in and listen and participate if he wishes. And then, after we've completed the interviews, I think we'd like to set aside some time to have a discussion and hopefully make a recommendation for the mayor to consider for that appointment to that vacant seat.
Okay. So, first up, we have Mr. Brian Ward.
Good evening.
Go ahead and sit down.
This moving off?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Look everyone face to face.
Actually, we want that to be pointed straight at your mouth.
Yeah. So, I can't see.
Serious.
No, you're supposed to be picked up.
Yeah. They want you to-
It really does.
Yeah. Right, straight edge.
All right.
Yeah. They recorded all of this. So, they actually do want it to be heard.
I'm kind of a rookie at this, so you kind of have to steer me in the right direction.
So, do we want him to respond to the four questions that you would-
Sure. If you guys would like to walk through those questions from up here, maybe just go around and whoever wants to ask the first question, then we can rotate down the dais.
Or could I suggest we give him a little time to give an intro of himself and then we'll go into those?
Yeah, I think that'd be great. Maybe you could just give us a brief synopsis of who you are.
My name is Brian Ward. I've been a resident of this town for approximately, a little over four years now. I basically spent most of my life in Oregon. I lived in the Beaverton area and a few, several places around there also. I did do two years in California. My other wife, rest of my time, has been sent here in the northwest. And, I guess you could say, I'm retired. I spent 29 years with GMAC or other parts of General Motors. I've gone to some schooling. I'm also retired from the Army National Guard. So, I did them for a few years also. And, I guess, go ahead and ask the next one, then I may go ahead. I'm on a roll.
You indicated on your response to Tony that you did not have previous experience with any committees or boards such as this?
Well, I've had no experience in political, but I do have a fair number of experience with the Boy Scouts. I did several years with them in a leadership position. So, yes, I do have some local experience. Also, I work with SALT. They're the ones that go around and pick up trash. In fact, I did this town just last year. Over where the health club is, they're working on the hill behind there. I was down there cleaning up that area. So, I do have an interest in where I live. And, I'm looking for everything to maybe be just a little bit better.
Do any of the other commissioners have questions on that subject or-
Could you elaborate on your involvement with other committees, boards, or groups?
Well, the only other groups involved, I guess you'd have to say be the Scouts. I guess you would consider that a group?
Sure.
And, the only other group I have really involvement with, you know, on a fairly regular basis is SALT. But, I do not belong to any, I guess you would call it, other group. Most of mine is, pretty much everyone knows about. I do not belong to anything you haven't heard before or don't know about.
Neighborhood Association?
Excuse me?
Neighborhood Association?
No. I do not belong to a neighborhood association.
Well, you actually do, but you may-
Well, yes. You're right. We all do in a way.
Everybody's in.
I pay my taxes.
Everybody's in.
Yeah, you're in one or the other.
That's right.
Have you ever gone to one of your neighborhood meetings?
When neighborhoods first opened up, everyone expresses a lot of interest and desire to get things going in the right direction, but over time, it tends to, I guess you could say, lose some interest. And, no, I have not been to maybe one at the most, you know, actually neighborhood meeting. So, no, I'm not involved in it.
I'm not familiar with where your address is, so I don't know what neighborhood you're in.
If you were to find me-
What neighborhood is he in, Tom?
Well, you know where the Kmart and the Albertsons is. If you were to head that direction and you take the first left from the Albertson's, yeah, from the Albertsons, you take a left there at the light and you go down and take the second right. There's a new housing area. It's fairly new. It's been there, what, four years?
Maple.
I'm in that housing area right there.
So, you're off of Maple Lane?
It's north of Maple. Exactly. Off of Maple Lane Road.
Mayor's state or something?
I think it's Caulfield might extend up there.
Caulfield Neighborhood Association?
Yeah.
Which was just re-instituted.
Right.
What would you hope to accomplish as a member of the planning commission?
On the which commission? What's my hope to do here?
Yes.
Well, we all want to work together. I guess you could say, what I'd like to offer, I expect most everyone's here in this town, what, for 15, 20 years? Am I right?
Forty-one.
Forty-one? Well, you're a little bit ahead of me. I guess what my goal is, is to offer maybe a fresh opinion without, you know, not rocking any cradles, but maybe to offer something from maybe somebody a little outside the town. So, maybe, I'm not going to agree with everything that comes across the committee. I want to say, here is another idea that we may want to consider. And, it's still work with the committee to see that the goals are met. That is what I would like to see.
I just have a quick, one of my thoughts or questions, it sounds like you spend a lot of your time living over in the west side Beaverton area. Is that sort of-
Well, yes. That was most of my time was over in that area. I guess you could say, I was there for almost six, seven years.
And-
Raised my kids there.
What do you see as the distinction between west side Beaverton and what we have here in Oregon City and the direction those two communities are going?
Well, if you take the size of the community, there is a difference, of course, of the population size. I think what we can offer here is more of a course to follow. Beaverton is so large, everyone's going in different direction. As far as getting a community steering towards one direction, it probably isn't going to happen. Whereas, we have a town of 28, what, 30,000? Pretty close?
Thirty thousand.
Where that's a town you can still potentially do something with and decide how we're going to track that town in the future.
And, what is that vision that you see for us?
Well, I see, Oregon City is a really wonderful town, but if you take some of the other towns around us, they might have a few features I'd like to see also, to where we might pick up more of the general public, maybe certain little things, like maybe even come in and say, hey, look what we have and here's another idea. Kind of look at other coin. We sure, we all see it on one side, but if somebody can maybe look at another side of it, that we may be not all aware of it, because this is the new kid, he might be able to put something into the ideas. Instead, we're only going one way. And, it's a great way, but I can offer a second opinion. But, again, like I say, working with the group.
I'm curious, what is your perception of how the planning commission works and what our responsibilities are?
Well, if I was to take how the planning commission works, is basically, you're going to assist in what's going to be going into this town, probably in businesses is possibly a good guess. The future of what kind of business we're going to do? What are we looking for? Am I pretty close? And, our job would be then to assist the, what I'd be safe in saying, city council? At your approval, hey, we may wish to consider this idea. Am I pretty safe in saying that?
Well, I guess if I was going to summarize what the planning commission does in a nutshell, is that we review applications for consistency with the planning and zoning regulations for the city of Oregon City. We typically don't initiate any proposals to do things that's brought before us, and then we assess whether they're consistent with the requirements for that particular zone of the city and if they're consistent with the comprehensive plan goals. So, generally speaking, and I guess the other commissioners could chime in, but our role is more to react to proposals rather than to present new proposals.
I just have one more thing that will happen within the next two years. We'll be reviewing our comprehensive plan, which is basically a guide, if I could say, in terms of how development occurs. And, at that point, of course, I just get brought forward from the planning commission, but for the most part, once those are adopted, then they form the basis of evaluating, determining the zoning and how things proceed. So, there is some creativity opportunities and they will be coming up in the next two years.
Just what I hope to learn.
Any other comments on that particular question or additional questions?
Nope. Is there, there's the last, did we get to the last one?
I'd say we're on the last one right now.
So, the last question says, describe any experience, skills, or interests that have helped you prepare for a position on the planning commission.
Well, I have dealt with people, I guess you could say, before. I've dealt with groups before. I've dealt with hundreds before. I am fairly comfortable talking to all of you. There is, I'm very willing to exchange ideas and I'm not really what you'd call a nervous person. I try to listen to people say and offer the best I can, things that may help.
Other comments or questions?
What are the three biggest issues you think are, that have befallen our town? Maybe that's a poor description, but what are the three major issues? A lot of people join boards and commissions for, to share their expertise or they latch on to, you know, some sort of community program or issue or something? What are the at least top two or three issues that you think are the most important?
Well, I'd have to say, not knowing, of course, all the details what are involved, but I don't know how every person in town feels about this, but you're asking what I would like to see? I would like to see more business come into this town. I would like to see maybe more of a John Q. Public Appeal from other places besides this town, say, hey, I want to come to this town because it has this to look at. That is what I'd like to see, is just more business coming in, because I believe the largest employer is Fred Meyer.
Private employer.
Yeah. Right.
Actually, I think it's the hospital.
I think it's probably the hospital.
Right. It'd be nice to have maybe a few more and to go after that type of business and maybe bring them into this town, at least have them come take a look at it.
So, you want to talk to Eric Underwood, our economic development director?
I don't, like I say, this is the first time I've done this before.
Any other ideas or things that you're interested in seeing happening in Oregon City?
See more of a citizen involvement in what's going on in Oregon City, what maybe the future plans may be and make them aware of it. Say, this is what we're thinking about and how about some support along those lines?
Okay. Anybody else have any other questions?
I just was going to piggyback on Paul. So, Paul was, I think, trying to get you to say, well, or ask you, what do you think are some big issues facing the community that would involve planning and what we do here? Because we don't actually get to bring any businesses into town, which is great, but you could work on that through some other avenues.
Even if they're past issues too?
Yeah.
I'd be curious to know.
Well, I would say, to have the people themselves want to say, hey, this is the way we want Oregon City to go and to have them believe themselves and support of us getting in those directions, you know? I don't know how you feel the strength of them is out there. That's what I'm going for. A little more customer, not customer, committee and also the community support, the things that just might generate some business we didn't have there before. Comes something on the map.
Okay.
I don't have any more.
Me either.
Any other questions, comments? You have anything else that you'd like to just summarize your presentation?
Well, the questions were good. I think you pretty well gone around for everything what I feel I can do and hopefully what you think I can do. Also, I do take this very seriously. That's the way I'm going to, that's what I can offer. I am into this and, yes, I do have the time to do it and the will to do it. So, I think, what can I offer? There it is, right there. Somebody who's going to be able to walk in here and go to work and maybe, as I say, another sign of the coin. I'm the new kid on the block. I haven't been here as long as anybody here. So, I guess, can I summarize it? That pretty well says it. I'm here to work.
Thank you.
Sounds great.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for coming.
Denise McGriff was mentioning the Caulfield Neighborhood Association. It's been in existence, it was in existence for a while and then became inactive, but it's been in existence for the, more than a year now, I believe. It's an extremely active neighborhood association and, you know, it covers a lot of the area around the college and so forth. And, it is perhaps one of the basic avenues for public participation and it's something that you might want to become involved in.
Yes, it probably is, something I should become involved in. Find out who I would see and talk and go in those directions, as you say, so I come part of the neighborhood.
And, their meetings are listed on our website, the Oregon City's website. So, under the neighborhood association tabs, you can find out where their meetings are or where they are. I think they outgrew their police department's location, so they're meeting someplace else.
That's cool.
Yeah.
I'd like to maybe just piggyback on what Mayor Neely was saying, is that if you go on the Oregon City website, you'll see there's the listing of all the neighborhood groups there. And, one of the things that we typically do is when there is a development in the community being proposed, generally speaking, a representative from that neighborhood will come and make a presentation. So, that's one avenue that the citizens do have to get involved and express their opinions about the direction things are going, even before a proposal is brought to us. And then, usually, if it's an issue that the neighborhood feels strongly about one way or the other, we'll see the audience here will be full of participants that either want to speak in favor of or against a proposal. So, it's not unusual for us to have several people, especially on an important project, testifying sometimes on both sides of an issue.
Just way to do it.
Yeah.
And, the neighborhood you're in, I think everybody here agrees with you in terms of the need to bring in business and industry in Oregon City. And, the area you're in has a lot of land that is zone impact, is employment industrial land. And, we sure like input, including from the neighborhood associations, of what we can do to attract those features. We think the college is an opportunity there in terms of the right kind of industries coming in for internships and so forth. So, you might, you might want to look at that in particular for an interest.
I'll make it a point, get on the internet for Oregon City and find out where the next commission is. And, I'd be happy to come in here, next time we have a meeting and talk about what I found out.
Sounds good. Thank you for your time.
Well, thank you for listening to me. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you.
Thank you. What is this? It's way, it's way up there. Just get this one in. What is this? This is, this is definitely what he wrote, I guess. What is he currently doing? Does he swim on your walk today?
Pardon me?
Does he swim?
I didn't, actually, I didn't go out, I only go out generally weekends and, no, I didn't today.
Was he here today?
Yes.
Well, go out if you dare. Oh, that's back when they used to use mimeographs. I've got a few planning documents like that, really old ones.
Just right in front of the date.
Yeah.
That's what I need. Seventy-eight, seventy-nine.
No.
Want me to sit here? Please.
So, Mr. Mahoney, this is our planning commissioner and our mayor, Doug Neely.
How do you do? How do you do?
Mr. Mahoney also submitted the annexation plan as part of his application, which I've provided to the planning commission. I think they're all kind of looking over it right now, if you need to reference that at all.
Okay.
So, I think we'll begin with, if you wanted to start with kind of a little bit about you and your background and then we'll kind of go from there.
Okay.
My mind will want to set the timer five minutes.
I'm going to invoke the droner rule, your dad. I've been in planning for many, many years. I was assistant zoning administrator for Plaquemines County. Then, I went to what was the Metropolitan Planning Commission, completed a tri-county land use inventory and went to Portland State at that time as well. I was working part-time for them. Then, I, from there, I went to Lake Oswego as their planning director and started their planning program. They were having a planning program run through the city recorder's office. We didn't have one. They had a new city manager concept of city government and they asked if I would do that and so they hired me and I did. I was there for eight years and we processed the mountain park planned unit development, the first big one in Oregon. And, that was, that was an adventure. Let's just say, the lease, 680 acres, 10,000 homes and on and on. And, from there, I went back to school, got my master's in public administration. And, from there, I went to Wilsonville for three years and I was planning director there. And, after that, I went into, oh, just some consulting work with the city of Durham and did the Merrill Hirst concept plan for their annexation into the city of Lake Oswego, which included a $10 million sewer grant that had to be coordinated with the annexation. I just got tired of it. I said, the heck with it. I've been down for the count too many times. So, then I left planning and went into photography of all things. But, in the process of going into photography, I found that what you guys are doing now, I decided to do at Lake Oswego, and that was take pictures of the application and all the technical data that had agendas that went like this, down to that, because people understood what was going on. And, we introduced a concept at Lake Oswego where we would have 22 agenda items on, for hearing that night and be there till 2:00, 3:00 o'clock in the morning. Said fiddly-dee-to that. And then, just limited our agenda items to, I think it was about seven. And, we got out of there 11:00 o'clock at night. And then, along comes the Fasano decision, which I don't know if you knew, I presume that you do, which said that the planning commission is a quasi-judicial board and shall operate in that, in that regard. And, that the onus for the findings is on the applicant and not the staff. The staff will take from the comprehensive plan and apply that to the application, whereas the applicant will decide what findings, what facts they want to introduce into the, into the record for the planning commission consideration. And, that was a milestone in Oregon. It really was. It just, it just made everything, well, what it did is establish roles, what the planning commission does and what the applicant is required to do. So, that's pretty much it, from my standpoint. Covers 37 odd years of a lot of, a lot of adventure, so to speak.
Thanks. That's great. I think you covered the first couple items on the list of questions pretty thoroughly. Do any of the commissioners have questions on those first two items?
But, I guess I'd be on your professional experience with planning commissions and that, how about any volunteer other experiences on boards or committees that you may have served on?
You know, I kind of figured that after, you know, raising two kids and being Mr. Mom, well, I went to school and she worked, I just really didn't have time for that. I really, after 30 years of it, I was just kind of burnt out, you know? And, to be truthful with you, I find that voluntary for neighborhood associations and what have you, sometimes leaves you a little, leaves you wondering, what am I doing here? You know? Sometimes you can get some really good stuff coming out of those things, but the majority of it is just a lot of people sitting around complaining. And, that, I didn't want to get involved in that, so I just stayed on that.
So, I'm curious, what is it that has brought you to the point that you would like to be a part of this commission?
Well, I just am, feel that I'd like to, you know, volunteer my expertise to, to the city and I'm kind of anxious to get back into it again.
your involvement with the Rivercrest neighborhood. I know you live in Rivercrest, so I do know where Park, I do know where this street is, Swart Drive is.
Well, I have, I belong to the neighborhood association and live next door to one of the fellows that is on that. And, I attend whatever, whatever I can, but-
Are you going to be going to the meeting this Thursday?
Like, this Thursday? Now, if you ask, yes.
Well, I know Patty Brown could use some help on land use stuff. She has expertise in the neighborhood.
Is that right?
Yeah.
Well, I'm a little disappointed in the attendance there. We've got a big neighborhood. Nobody shows up.
Until their ox is gored.
What do you mean?
Until their ox is gored.
That's right. That's the name of the game. And, you have to be honest enough with yourself to understand that. And, that's why you people are sitting here, making the decisions, the easier decisions. Well, you've got the authority to do it, so, you know, you're the only ones that do.
Do you have any perception of this or any previous Oregon City planning commission?
Say again?
Do you have a perception of it? I mean, do you have an opinion of our actions or any of the previous actions?
Well, I think a planning commission's a planning commission's a planning commission. You know, I look at it over the TV, I tell my wife, nothing's changed. It's SOS. Same old stuff. It's the nature of land use planning. It's the nature of planning itself, is people have land, they want to develop it, it's a resource and they have a right to develop it and you have a right to respond. And, it's not going to change. So, my perception is, you guys are doing a good job. One of the big challenges in any commission is, you know, trying to balance things and- One of the big challenges in any commission is, you know, trying to balance things, and what, what does the, what really does the community want? Sometimes they don't know, really. So what'll we do? Okay? You got your comprehensive plan, use it. You assume that it was done in good faith, it was done professionally, with community input, yada, yada, so far and so forth. And then you get a situation like somebody gets being urbanic, be nice about it, and they appeal it to Luba, they say, and then it goes all, all the good faith efforts that you put into it and stuff like that, just on a technicality and stuff like that. So it, it can be wearing, it can be demanding, it can be challenging, but I think for the most part that planning commissions in Portland metropolitan area are doing a, doing a pretty good job. We have one thing that most people don't have in the United States, and it's a, that's a growth boundary. Conceptually, that, that's a home run, you know, really. But, you know, like that.
Was there any particular issue that motivated you or sparked your interest in coming back to the planning commission?
Yeah, it was, it was the, the Cal, Senator Cal, the, the issue there. I just decided that, you know, maybe I could be of some, some use in making decisions along those lines. But the irony of it is, and my experience has been, and, and, you know, just Doug shoot me if I talk too much here, but cities have to grow. They must grow. If they don't, they'll die. The tax base, they've got to protect that task, that tax base. If they don't, the cost of doing business will just leave them in the dust. And on the other hand, the growth can't exceed the amount of services that you're willing to, to provide, police, fire protection, libraries, sanitation, you name it. If it outgrows that, the rate of growth, then you're, you're back in a, in a bad situation.
So in other words, a lot of change has to happen in order for things to stay the same.
Yeah, St. Augustine, I think. But that is, a lot of people won't stop and think about that. When you're, when you're looking at your budget, you're, "How many police are we going to put on?" You know, "How many books are we going to buy?" You know, "What's the next park we're going to buy?", and stuff like that. So there's a thousand, hundred different ways of looking at planning, everybody's got an opinion and what have you, and you guys are, are right there, and you're, you're limited by, by your ordinances, your laws, and stuff like that. And you're caught right between I-205 and the bridge and McLaughlin Boulevard, you know, let's give us another freeway that run through this town, and another bridge, just close down. But my idea is that, and you've seen it, management by crisis, this happens in every city, okay? You don't know what's out that door coming. It might be a steam shovel, or it might just be a cool breeze, you know? But the next application might be really one that just rips the, the heart out of the city, you know? And it might not be, it might be a good deal. And so you never know what's come down the, down the, or, or through the doors, you know, it's management by crisis. God bless you for trying.
So do you go by Robert, Bob, or Rob, or?
Hey you is good.
No, I don't do hey you.
Bob's fine.
So Bob, a couple of questions for you. What, what do you see as three of the most pressing issues facing our community, and what do you see as three possible opportunities? And then I have a wonky question for you, because you, you mentioned Fasano, so I have to ask you a question about that.
Three, okay.
It could be two, I just threw three out.
Okay.
The top few.
Well, we're sitting at the end of the Oregon Trail, we take it for granted. It's like the Rose Parade. Last time I was at the Rose Parade, and I can't remember when I was, you know, but we, we just, this, the end of the Oregon Trail, they're teaching that in, in, in countries all over the world. So I think we ought to treat the end of the Oregon Trail like the end of the Oregon Trail. I think we're sitting on a goldmine. This is a historical city, it's an historical county, and I think that if, if somebody with lots and lots of money, they could almost turn this, the city into a, into a theme park. Now, I don't mean to be glib about it, don't get me wrong, but I mean, the historical significance of this city is just, is probably better appreciated in, along the Oregon Trail than it is in, in this, in this city. And I, I don't mean to point any fingers at anybody. So I would capitalize or concentrate on the aspect of history, and don't get, don't overlook that and let something happen to where we lose that, okay?
Is that an opportunity or?
Oh, I think it's, no, I think it's an opportunity, but it could be to a sort. I mean, this city could be a destination for a lot of people, but the irony of it is, if we really got successful about it, where are you going to put them all? You know? And how, you know, do you really want hotels and, and, and theme parks and, and stuff like that, you know, to emphasize the character of this city? I, I don't mean that, you know, at all, but there's got to be that balance. But not many cities have the unique history that this city has. The other thing is, I think, believe it or not, I think water. I think, and we've got plenty of it here in, in Oregon, but the, the difficulty is that you've got to, people need water, cities need water to grow. And just check your Oregon State laws on water rights and things of this nature, you can really get involved in a political mess if, if you don't really protect your, your source of water. The other thing I think is rate of growth, rate of growth. You've got to have a sustained rate of growth that, well, take a look at Sherwood. Went over there the other day, started driving through some of the neighborhoods, unbelievable how, how fast that city has grown. And it tore that city apart, the administration, city managers lost jobs, building departments were a mess because they couldn't keep up with the rate of growth. Now, this is a capitalistic society, I understand that, and people come in and they got 50 acres of land, they want to subdivide it. Bang, 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 bang. You know, say, do you just say, "Yes, go ahead," simply because you own it and the streets are going to meet? Or you say, "Well, the public interest here now." You know, and that's a hard question to answer, it really is. Well, the third thing I, I think would be open space, you know, public-owned open space. You've got some great parks in this community, Rivercrest being one of them. So as the city grows, you have to maintain open space so that you can service the public. We live right across the street from that little, oh, spray, spray bath, same thing.
Spray park.
Rivercrest Park?
Yeah. And I'm telling you, that thing is so successful, what a, we're all, really, the kids are out there having fun and playing tennis and all that kind of stuff. So parks are really community-oriented, I, I think, you know? If you want to do something really neat for, for your community, have, have a good open space park program. And I, I forgot the other ones.
That's all right.
You had one more question?
Yeah, oh yeah, the wonky question for you. So you know about Fasano.
Uh-huh.
So who was the opponent in Fasano, and what was the name of one of the lawyers?
Well, Fasano was the lawyer. I don't know who opposed. I think it was the county.
Which county?
Washington.
Okay, Washington County.
Yeah.
Did you know that answer, Tony? Oh, okay.
It's a great piece of litigation to read, it really is.
The attorney for the, for Mr. Fasano is a friend.
The attorney for, or?
Mr. Fasano.
Oh, is that right?
Yes.
And Lou, isn't it? Lou Fasano? I think it was Lou Fasano.
I don't know Mr. Fasano personally, matter of fact, I think he's not more.
Oh, I see what you're getting at.
I said the attorney.
Oh, the attorney for him, okay.
Is, is a good friend.
Well, he, that was a great decision, it really was.
I'll, I'll test you later, Charles.
We're playing Trivial Pursuit for Planning Commission now.
It's almost as famous a case as, you know, people knowing what the, what Senate Bill 100 was from way back when, and some of us learned it in school.
Okay, any other questions for Mr. Warren?
So in 30 years, you've lived, you've lived here longer than I have, not longer than Chris, but what are your observations about that change? Because I know when I moved here, the town was only around 9,000 and some, and I thought, "Well, that's a nice-sized town."
I have now, you lived in Oregon City for the last eight years?
Barbie?
You've been in Oregon City for eight years?
Well, no, I, I've, I've lived in Oregon City since I was a sophomore in high school, and that was 53 when I came here.
Yeah, so it really looked different in 53.
Yeah, yeah, it was. It's, this is a good town. It really is a good town. The thing that you notice, that I notice more than anything, and you're really going to notice it, because I watched it on TV earlier the other day, is when they closed down the jug handle. So traffic, more than anything else, can just annihilate a city. And 90, 95% of the people that are in cars are going through this city to someplace else, and so I, transportation is a, is a, is a vital part of your, your planning concept. Nothing gets done unless somebody can get somewhere. People got to go to work, products have to be distributed, emergency, fire, police, all that kind of stuff, it's all transportation. You've got to have a good transportation plan. And we live in a nation that, in a, in a world where communication, just, just know what's going to happen 10 years from now when it comes to communication.
You know, ironically, you mentioned transportation planning and
TSP.
We're right in the midst of doing a transportation plan update, and in fact, they, I was at a stakeholders' meeting just a few days ago, and that was exactly what you said was one of the comments, that so many people are traveling through Oregon City. They don't necessarily live here, and they don't necessarily work here, but they travel through, and it creates a lot of traffic and congestion problems.
You can say the same thing about Milwaukee, Lake Oswego, Westland, somebody's always going through your city, you see? And I'm, you know, I'm a, I'm a great one in the inevitability of things, and I think where it's headed towards is a metropolitan planning commission with local, local control over local issues, but the issues are getting beyond the local stuff. And it's, it's, the economy of scale, get to the point where you just can't afford it anymore, and yet, as happened in your fire department, you just couldn't afford to pay the, the benefits, and, and stuff like that. And it's going to happen in open space, it's going to happen in transportation, because the dollar's involved, and I, I recommend highly that you get the Coast Guard involved in anything that you do early on so that we get enough hype on anything that we do, i.e. the bridge. See, now, now we call it that planning, you see? And I'm being facetious there, but I mean, it, it comes back eventually to bite you. Another thing I believe strongly in is expediency. There's some things that the, that planning commissions should not, by their very nature, take too much time on. Get it done, okay? When you're in a position of command, command. Do it. Take your testimony, weigh it, you're there, and you asked to be there, I'm asking to be there. So, you know, just be civil to each other, you know? And I don't, you don't have to go steady, but you don't have to make issues out of, out of non-issue things, you see? Drives, drives the staff nuts, you know, those poor people.
No. So Bob, in conclusion, why should we recommend to Doug that you be appointed?
Well, number one, I'm Irish. I don't see any Irish names up there, okay?
Yes, you do.
That's a Mac, that's a Mac.
It's Irish.
I don't want to, you know, imply that my credentials are any better than what you're, I just happen to have experience in, in the trenches, that's all. So I bring a certain amount of knowledge, you know? And, but that doesn't mean that I, that your natural instincts are any, any better than mine, they're probably a lot, a lot better than mine. And I think that has some merit to it, is, you know? But on the other hand, too, I, I think that what you want to do is whoever you appoint to this should balance out the commission. You don't want, don't want, get it too heavy this way, that way, just keep it balanced and representative and that, that kind of stuff. I also think that, you know, a certain amount of, I don't want to use the word humor, but people sitting on this side get intimidated by authority, you see? That kind of stuff. And so you want to, you know, want to make yourself accessible, you know, open to ideas and stuff like that, but that's a hard question to answer, because I want to be, that's why.
Can't be too accessible.
Very good. Any other questions for this candidate?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you for your time.
That's it?
Thanks, Frank.
That's all you guys got?
I could have put on some more trivia for you if you wanted.
Well, listen, that just about got me, huh? I'm free to go.
How about name the first director of DLCD?
I'll, as soon as I leave here, I'll go.
Okay, all right, well, you call me.
I'll call you.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you very much. Good night, thank you.
Might be.
Wes Kalorsten wasn't the first one, he was like second.
So who is it? Can't ask a question you don't know the answer to.
You have to ask. Oh, so you're asking questions and you don't even know the right answer?
Well, I was just going to tell you that the, the lead attorney for Mr. Fasano was none other than Edward J. Sullivan.
I thought that was...
And anybody that's in planning, we had to study, we all know that, but Tony just forgot, it wasn't on his book.
I didn't know it was Washington County, I thought it was Sullivan.
Yeah, it was, it was a, it was a big, big, I mean, it was a really big case.
He wasn't, he wasn't quite honest. The reason he applied was, I said, he, he hits me oftentimes at the coffee shop, and he comes up with good ideas, and he said, "You want to do something? We've got openings on the planning commission."
Oh, that's funny.
Uh-huh. And which coffee shops are these?
And they're not going to advertise them, there aren't too many people sitting at my table.
Yeah, you want to go incognito.
So, kind of just leave it up to you guys to kind of deliberate, if you can come to a consensus recommendation, that'd be great.
Well, I have a question for you. Did, did you intentionally get two people that are like completely at opposite ends of the spectrum here?
Luck of the draw.
It's whoever applies.
Whoever applies.
Nobody kind of like in the middle. Well, you know, just my observation is that Mr. Ward, I'm not sure he's ever even paid attention to what the planning commission does, but he obviously had no idea what the, the scope of our responsibilities are, and the, Mr. Mahoney is over at the other end of the scale where he could probably tell us exactly what every procedure is that we are supposed to follow. So I mean, we're totally opposite ends of the spectrum.
That must be curious to hear staff's recommendation on this one.
He's keeping his business. I thought it was ironic that he said he didn't want the planning commission to tip too far on one side, and he's whispering to me, he said, "Oh, he doesn't know, we already have two planners on here."
Professional experts.
TV, that's right.
So is it possible to say that one candidate was significantly underqualified and the other one was significantly overqualified?
The bar too low.
He's at the bar too low.
Never be overqualified.
So, discussion.
I, for me, I clearly think Mr. Mahoney would be more beneficial on the committee than, than Mr. Ward, from what I saw today, and was much more impressed with him than, than Mr. Ward, I guess, I would say.
I agree, and with Brian, he had energy, but that if he had... So I, I like Mr. Mahoney as well.
I think we're going to do a lot of policy work, you know, pretty soon on the South End Plan and comprehensive plan update and all that kind of stuff. So I think that it's not a bad idea to have some horsepower toward the planning side of things to get that kind of stuff accomplished. Maybe, I don't know, that is unbalanced, but.
I think my, my opinion is definitely Mr. Mahoney. He can hit the ground running much quicker, I would guess. I would say.
Horsepower.
Yeah, I like the horsepower. All four.
Denise?
I'm wondering, do we have, we only had two options. I'm wondering if we have an opportunity to, to open it up and see if we can get some more applicants?
No, we, we have the closing date for this position.
Oh, I agree. I'm just, I just thought I'd better ask the question.
Well.
You know, I'd like to encourage some other women to apply. Not that I'm worried about you guys, but that's all right. See, gender equity, you know?
I, I'm not really concerned about gender, gender equity as much as just, you know, that we do already have two planners on the commission. And I'm just wondering if that tilts things too much in that direction.
We don't all think alike, by the way.
Well, I've noticed that. My observation about Mr. Ward is that he would probably be beneficial if he was associated with the community director for business enterprise, because he seems to have a real interest in, in drawing business to the community. And I noticed that, that the only question that he really responded to on your survey was about his interest in the board or committee was to prevent the loss of employment and income for Oregon City from happening again, which was the reason I asked him if he really understood what this commission's charge was to do. It's obvious that Mr. Mahoney has a clear picture of what the commission's charge is to do. And it sounds like he has a, a good understanding of our responsibilities. So of the two candidates, I would say he would be the one I would recommend if we have no other alternatives.
Well, I would say I would agree with you to a point in terms of, I mean, he said he's been out of it for quite a long time. And let's just say that our statewide land use planning program has come a long way since Fasano. I mean, we have, not that we're all going to be knowing all these cases, because I don't really deal with the case law a lot, but things have really, really changed. I mean, we have periodic review now. When that annexation was done, the Portland Metropolitan Boundary Commission was still in existence. It hasn't been in existence for, whoo, well, years, because it kind of merged into Crag and the Boundary Commission merged together and became what we now consider Metro. I mean, all of the requirements that we have as a region are way different, you know, than what it was back in.
Right.
Back in 1975, when, you know, the whole ball of wax got rolling. So I mean, I think, you know, I think he could get it to speed. I guess the only thing I would have to say, since you guys all know my background and I come up from the grassroots, I'm, I'm a little discouraged in the fact that we don't have more involvement in our community, you know, in terms of, you know, I didn't, I didn't exactly know where this address was and I started to Google it and then got distracted. So I didn't act, that's why I said I didn't know where Mr. Ward lived. But I thought, oh, he's talked about Beavercrest. I thought maybe Thayer Road area. And that's a fairly new area. But, you know, Rivercrest has been popping along for a long time. I mean, it's, it's one of the more established neighborhoods. And I'm not saying that you find out everything that's going on in a neighborhood association because you don't. You can, he's right. It can, it can become polarized or it can become, you know, really active and.
We can bring the stewards in from Lake Oswego or some of the other neighborhood groups.
The stewards?
The stewards are the ones that are against any kind of land use overlay that protects natural resources.
Oh, okay. Well, I'm not saying we want to import people.
Quite a large group.
But anyway, so I mean, I appreciate, I, you know, I have, I have an affinity for that. And I was, when I saw he wrote down Rivercrest neighborhood, I said, ooh, somebody that's been active or may, knows something about what's going on with them. And, you know, this is such a great town. It's so easy to get involved. If you want to, you could be doing something every night of the week.
Right.
That's if you were crazy enough to do that. But there are so many opportunities to interact and be involved. And even if you don't have a computer, you could go to the library and, you know, there's a myriad of handouts and pamphlets. So there's a lot of, there's a lot of stuff going on in town. And I guess in a lot of ways, I'm always kind of amazed that, how much people don't know, you know, about just maybe not the big issues, but even, you know, sort of.
Well, I mean, I joke with you, but I'm, I'm serious though, because, I mean, the two cities are completely different in their level of public involvement. When we have even a partition or like a really small application, we can fill a room. And I, I just don't get it. It's just amazing the amount of participation that's there versus here. And I don't know, I just, I've always tried to figure out what the dynamic of that was, but.
Well, coming back to these two applicants, the, you know.
Thank you.
There's, aside from the experience, and I kind of echo what Zach was saying, when I hear the testimony of these, or the presentation of these two candidates, Mr. Ward appeared to have a lot of enthusiasm, but as Zach was saying, he wasn't familiar with his neighborhood or even which neighborhood he was in, citizen involvement committee or any other aspect of really being involved in the community. So it was like he had this enthusiasm, but he hasn't really applied it to anything in the city. And on the other hand, Mr. Mahoney, you know, he's, he's aware of the history of the community and appears to appreciate the history of the community to the extent was, he was actually echoing some of the things that Eric Underwood was talking about, being able to leverage the history of the city as part of economic development. And so that was consistent with some of the things, the, the direction that it seems that we want to go with the city. So I was a little disappointed in Mr. Ward's, not just his lack of qualifications, but his lack of apparent involvement in the community as well.
It's not hard to do a little research to figure out what's going on.
Seriously, you talk about the computer, it only takes about a half an hour to get on the Oregon City website and get really familiar with the city really fast. I mean, just a.
What do you think?
Yeah, that was going to be my comment, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, good. Well, I was channeling Chris here.
Would our consensus?
What is your thought? What are your thoughts?
I think we have a consensus.
First of all, Denise pointed, came up with the three things for him to discuss. And he's, he looked at it in a very, in a broad sense. The open spaces and the parks being important. The economic development, the appropriate kind of growth. I mean, I, I think he's got a, if I can say, a global view of Oregon City. And I think, I think that's really important.
And he talked about the balance between the historical aspect of the city along with the growth and.
Right.
Rate of growth and economic development.
Yep.
We don't want to be Williamsburgers.
Gee, this is the first, this is the first group I've been to that asks my opinion.
I'm always interested in your, I'm always interested in your opinion. I value your opinion.
Tony, is this something we need a formal motion on or?
No, because Doug.
No, no, you'll be making a recommendation to me. And, and I think it's pretty clear what the recommendation is.
I think we have a consensus that of the, these two candidates, there's only one that we could really give a recommendation to.
And you got back to the other gentleman who wasn't within the city of Oregon City?
I never had a chance to speak with him. I left him a couple of message, messages.
Okay. Well, then he, yeah, he knows.
He was not, he never returned any calls.
Now, what if Mr. Ward had come up through the neighborhood associations and he was president of his neighborhood association for about two years? I'm just curious. What, what would we do?
Well, you, but you wouldn't know what his presentation would be.
That's true.
One of my former coworkers said that.
Just kind of pulling the business down.
If ifs and buts were candy and nuts, it would be Christmas every day. But the fact was, he didn't have any involvement in the community.
I made it easy.
So it's irrelevant.
And I guess from my opinion, more, you could have involvement or not, but to have a grasp or an understanding or at least an idea of some of the issues that he feels like, not even that, that this body should pursue, because kind of clearly he didn't understand the scope of this body, but, but this community. We, I think anybody that wants to get involved in the community really has, I would hope, a vision or at least a thought on the direction that we wanted to go. And I was trying to pull that out and I really wanted to see if he could compare and contrast the West Side where he had been for so long versus us, and then further where he would like to see us go. But it didn't seem to have.
Almost had to bring some of that over here.
Well, yeah, that's kind of where I was wondering. But, but he really just didn't even give any answer as to what the direction or thought he had for our city.
Well, I also appreciated that Mr. Mahoney had taken the time to watch us on TV. So he already had observed us where Mr. Ward hadn't even taken the time to even go on the city website, let alone watch us.
I think we have.
I think we're good.
We got a sense of.
Thank you.
Okay.
And incidentally, I'm doing this with all the positions and having the respective committees, boards and so forth do interviews. And only in one case was I.
In a corner?
Well, yeah, because three people voted one way and three people on the board voted the other way.
You got to pay the big bucks that night, didn't you?
Tony made it easy for us tonight.
Yeah.
Just process, I just process some folks.
Okay, Tony, here's your, here's your trivia question. What was one of the, what was the name of one of the authors of Senate Bill 100?
Got me on that.
It's like his vocal.
Right?
His son lives right here in Flagless County.
Paul McCall?
Paul McCall? No. Hector McPherson.
Yes, that's right. I was trying to figure out for that as well.
Greg, Greg McPherson.
Greg's father, yes. And, and a Republican.
And a Republican.
So we did place on your dais as well the quasi judicial hearing script and procedures just so everyone have a copy and includes some of the presentation that Garvey Schuber Bear presented to the planning commission concerning hearing process ex parte.
So Charles, I think he's recommending you practice this in front of your mirror.
We can always help get through it. We have the attorney here.
Yeah, by the way, I've been in Toastmasters, so, you know, I can, I can help you with that.
So any other questions at this point? We will not be having a hearing or a meeting in two weeks during the catastrophe.
Thank you. Are we really calling it the catastrophe?
It's still the catastrophe.
If anybody finds any t-shirts with that on, buy me one and I will pay you back because I am going to be gone.
You're going to leave before Thursday.
I'm leaving, I'm leaving Thursday morning for Southern Oregon.
And you're not coming back until Tuesday evening?
Tuesday, yes. I will be, I will be going to Southern Oregon. And then once we get done down there, then we are driving to Centralia. And we will be hanging out in Centralia until Tuesday.
You can watch the, the bridge move online. We have a cam set up.
I'm going to watch it.
Please don't come out and watch.
Believe me, I would have heard so many people say they're going to go down to Home Depot. And I said, don't do that.